The Connected City Design Challenge is an urban design competition seeking design strategies to connect downtown Dallas and the Trinity River curated by Larry Beasley and produced by the City of Dallas's City Design Studio.
We have a real opportunity here. We've got the judges in from the Connected City Design Challenge and they are reviewing the different submittals to the city, talking about how to link the Trinity to downtown. So we have the opportunity, since we have these gentlemen who are internationally known urban designers, to come and speak to us today about kind of what's happening in the field of urban design. So without further ado, what I'd like to do is introduce both gentlemen to you, reacquaint you with Larry Beasley, who's of course headed the design studio for us, and introduce the two of them. The two of them will then speak and then we can have questions and answers. So I hope that you all remember Larry Beasley. He was the former director of planning for the city of Vancouver. He has retired from there and he is now in private practice. He's also a professor at the University of British Columbia. Larry's been working in Rotterdam, in Moscow, in Abu Dhabi. So he's got his own experience from around the world and he of course is working with us. The next person I'd like to introduce is Alan Jacobs. And so Mr. Jacobs is one of the judges of the competition. He trained at the University of Miami, Harvard, and the University of Pennsylvania. He was a Fulbright scholar. He taught at Penn and also he was the head of the City and Regional Planning Department at Berkeley. Some of his career highlights include, he was the director of city planning for the city of San Francisco. He has a Guggenheim Fellowship. He's won the Kevin Lynch Award from MIT. He's written several books, including Great Streets, looking at cities making city planning work, and a forthcoming book called The Good City Reflections and Imaginations. The second speaker is Peter Bishop and he hails from England. He was trained in town planning at the Manchester University. He teaches urban design at the Bartlett School of Architecture in University College in London. He is also a visiting professor at Nottingham Trent University. His career highlights include being a, I'll call it a director of design for the city of London, deputy chief executive at London's Development Agency. He's the design advisor to the mayor of London. He's chair of the National Network of Architecture Center and he has a book that has recently been published called The Temporary City. And so Mr. Jacobs is going to speak first. If you want to come on up and then Mr. Bishop will speak and then after that we'll take questions. They will press it for you. All you have to do is tell them next slide or Joe will follow along.
Okay. Thank you. Hi, everybody. It's very nice to be here. Very nice to be brought here. Thank you. I, usually you should know, it takes me about 10 minutes to say hello, but that's all the time I have to talk, so I'd better be quick. In this very short talk today, which is a sort of introduction to some of the things that I do and would like to think that I know about, I'll spend, concentrate on the physical, designable elements of the best streets. But before I do that, I want to spend just a few moments on the subject of urban patterns. They provide the contexts for neighborhoods and streets, good or bad. I hope that a few maps of each, each one of a square mile and each at the same scale will make my points. This is one square mile. You're looking at one square mile of Venice. If you know Venice at all, then you know that that one square mile has most of Venice. Some years ago, I was doing research that would become my Great Streets book. I knew that the Grand Canal, the centerpiece there, was in fact a great street. So to show its context, I prepared a square mile map. And then for some crazy reason, I began to count the intersections. There are 1,725 intersections in that square mile. That's 1,725 choices to go one way or another. There are also 985 blocks. Wow. And then I did, I knew that I was going to do Market Street in San Francisco, not as a great street, but as a once-great street. And I knew I was going to do that, so I did a square mile map with Market Street in the center. And I don't, that can't be at the right scale because the other one has so much more in it. And I checked that about 20 times and I realized it's at the right scale. It was surprise. That one has 293 intersections in it. Remember I said 1,700? That's 293 intersections and 216 blocks. Choice has always been a big thing in America. Freedom of choice, we kept telling ourselves, things like that. So, but they, these people, they have 293 choices in downtown San Francisco. What's interesting too is that all of Venice, almost all of Venice was in that square mile. This is 1/43 of San Francisco. And I gather that your city has 390 or something square miles. So whoa, it's, you know, the scales are different. I then went on to Portland. I did a square mile of Portland. There it is. That's got the smallest grid pattern of any major city in America. 200 feet by 200 feet. And then I'm surprised to hear that you once had a grid like that in center of Dallas. That's as good, and it's a small scale, as as good a grid as you'll ever find. 200 square feet per block, lively, busy streets, eminently livable. 370 intersections. I did one of Brasilia. Brasilia is not a very walkable city. You don't walk in Brasilia. You drive. You just don't walk in Brasilia. Huge blocks and huge streets. They have 59 intersections. No, excuse me, they have 92 intersections. And I was doing some work, some consulting also in Irvine. So I did a square mile of Irvine, California. You don't walk in Irvine. Nobody walks in Irvine. There are 15 intersections and huge streets. There are some of those streets at the intersections have 12 lanes in each direct, no, excuse me, six in each direction. Well, you don't, you don't walk there. That's the business A point here is that appropriate urban patterns have been and can be achieved by communities if they want them through existing powers, through guidelines for developers, and through direct public action. I wasn't born yesterday. I know that developers will tell you a million times, they want big blocks. So they put some big things in them. And it's uneconomic to do on small blocks. And that's nonsense. If they had to do it on small blocks, they'd do it on small blocks, you know? The biggest thing I've learned about urban land economics is that if there's a rule or a norm that you know cannot be broken, then it's economic to build under the rule or the norm. If on the other hand, you think or know that the rule or norm can be broken, then it's not economic to build under the norm. It's very simple stuff. Okay, let's go on to the physical, designable characteristics of the best streets. On the best streets, people can and do walk with leisure. Next. They can be designed, next slide, they can be designed that way to encourage leisure, leisurely walking. These people on the Colli d'Orizzo are obviously at leisure. Please note the trees, the buildings, the shade, the width of the walk. In Toronto, leisure on less wide walks with sun when it's cold and street displays. Often, we make walks too wide. Leisurely, and then the next is of leisurely walking in New York City. Here are people at leisure on a Vancouver walk. Next. Next. Physical comfort. Physical comfort is a requirement. These people on a street in Chico, California are comfortable. On a one-way side access road, they feel comfortable about walking in the street. Chico has one of the best multiway boulevards you'll find anywhere. Notice the shade, please. It's hot in Chico. On the next, in Amont San Dó, a boulevard, a street in Tokyo. Note the walk width. Here, those people are walking with comfort, physical comfort. On the Coors Mirabeau in, next. Often, it's just, in Exon Provence, it's the trees and then shade that invite and give comfort from the sun. On a Rome street, in winter, when it's cold, you want sun for comfort and so they have it here with deciduous trees. Another requirement for good physical street, for the physical requirements of streets, is something that I call definition. An ability, and that is something that defines, actually defines the street. The best streets are defined. Next, as these in New York. The right-of-way has definition. It's created by the buildings or on this next slide, by buildings and the trees. In Vancouver, it's often, next, it's often the trees alone that act as the defining elements. Sometimes buildings, they have the definition, the defining elements, usually buildings have to have a height that is one-half the width of the whole right-of-way, if you want to get definition, either by trees or by buildings or by boat. Transparency is a requirement. It speaks to the ability to see or know what is behind whatever it is that is defining the street. Next. To see or know whatever is behind, whatever is defining the street. Next. So these houses in New York have transparency. You either can see or know by the window what's behind there, as do these simple ones in Vancouver. This, I know this is the home of Neiman Marcus. God forbid we should have a Neiman Marcus. You know, instead we got this. And there's no transparency. They were told we couldn't, we were told you can't do that these days on a department store. Yeah. So look down the street. Next. They really did Macy's. And it's got all that transparency and it's exciting. It faces Union Square. They redid it to get the transparency. Bless them. Next is, this is just to know and to remember that glass is not always transparent. This is in Pasadena. Those have got to be the Darth Vaders of all buildings. You know, with a building like, a building like that, nothing good could be happening in that building. Complementarity. For sure, all buildings on a street do not, do not have to be the same. But on the best streets such as Astrogit, they tend to complement one another. None of those buildings are the same, but they complement each other in scale. Similarly, with new development in Amsterdam, this is brand-new development in Amsterdam. They're all the same. It was all by different architects. They are all at the same scale and they go with each other. None of them are the same. Or in Malmö, in Sweden, across the bay. There it is. Yeah, those are different. There's similarity with new development. There is complementary. Quality and maintenance are absolutely key. Quality of materials and workmanship and maintenance. Next. This, the upper left is, has quality maintenance. This is in Toronto and it's not well-maintained. It's very badly maintained on Blor Street. The best streets have qualities that engage the eyes. The one on the, on the left has all those little indentations or things that come out as opposed to the one on the right. Building A with more detail than building B will engage the eyes more. Signs and habitation attract the eyes. Next. This in Moscow, the eyes get bored by slab buildings. They're all the same. The, in Barcelona, the, next, there was just details that engage the eyes. And next. God forbid we should be as good as Gaudi. In Portland, Portland, the ever-moving shadows and new development of deciduous trees help to add interest for the eyes. Trees, next. Shadows, walls along Jerez de Fontana in southern Spain do the job. Qualities that, there are some qualities that aren't required, but they may contribute. Such as, I've gone through the trees. You know, I don't know how many times I've come to the conclusion that the best bang for the buck is trees on doing streets. These newly planted trees on the Visitero Avenue in San Francisco are beginning to do the job. That was a bleak street. The trees and small dense housing in Portland, next, do what you want them to do. Focal points can help, such as this in Barcelona. San Francisco, San Francisco bulbouts in the, and this is a job we did in a little park, little parklet where we did murals for kids. San Francisco did in some areas what we call then bulbouts. Does this eating area in the street, it really doesn't work. And citizens did that. We built the outside of it and put the bollards in. Citizens have done the rest. In Mountain View, the eating area creates the interest and it works. That's how it used to be parking. Fountains, joy. Joy is really important. You know, just doing fun things like these in Nuremberg, these fountains in Nuremberg, that one and the next one are just joyful To end this talk, I want to talk just a moment about urban public spaces. These mini-plazas in, that are now very popular in my city, are inexpensive, popular, built by adjacent uses, adjacent owners. They take up only two parking spaces and are very, very popular, as I've said. And they are public. Anyone can sit in them. Next. And next. This Portland area in the south waterfront, the space with cars allowed, please notice, also has water catchment areas, planting, low-rise, dense housing. Next. And this as well here. Next. This little fountain area, play area in Portland takes up almost no space. And everybody in the city goes there. And from outside the city. I'll end with Octavia Boulevard that replaced a freeway, central overhead freeway in San Francisco. That's the side access road, the park, then there's a park, Patricia's Green that ends the boulevard. Very small, but it is a most active new gathering place for the community. And Patricia's Green also has, next, a playground. I think the playground's kind of nice. There it is, facing a boulevard. And boy, do people use it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jacobs, thank you very much. I'm sure we're going to have some questions, so we'll...
I'll try to answer them.
Thank you. We'll get to the next speaker. Is that all right? Is that right, Joe? Okay. Thank you. A tour of the world right there. Please, go ahead.
Right. Good afternoon. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to address you. Thank you for the opportunity to come to Dallas and be involved in this extraordinary competition to look at reconfiguring the city. And as a Londoner, thanks for the energy. It's like having a treble espresso coming to Dallas. I enjoy it. So it's brilliant. I'm going to talk about temporary urbanism. And I'm going to try and persuade you that, hey, it's a lot of fun, but actually it's quite a serious proposition now for trying to change cities for the better. So, yeah, you can move things fairly quickly. Maybe I'm interested in temporary urbanism because I spent so much time building permanent bits of city. This is the King's Cross scheme. I did the planning on this. Not just the, one of the most valuable bits of real estate now emerging in London, the next one, also raked it now, only half-complete, but still now one of the most popular bits of real estate. There's actually embedding historic fabric and picking up a lot of the lessons Alan's talked about into the public realm. I worked on this, London Olympics, a huge piece of development, actually quite similar to the challenges you've got about reconnecting a piece of city to a riverbed. And, you know, producing the Olympics then after this. Ask you this really big question. How do you move from this, this kind of enclosed, secure campus, and blow it out into being a piece of living city? And now I'm working on the long-term master plans, looking at the legacy and how we create this piece of city where previously there was nothing except infrastructure and low-grade industry. And how are we actually creating a new piece of London, a new place of London of value where people want to live. And during the time when I worked and set up the Bay of London's Design Studio, we became very interested in this, the idea of incremental change, planned change, but doing it in a way that allows things to happen. And constructing pieces of city over time. I'll just show you this quick example. This is a green grid we put together for London. It's still being built out. And the idea was how do we take the kind of the big countryside into the city? Well, actually it's there already, all these bits of leftover, underused spaces. And if you put them together, if you redesign them, if you manage them, if you overlay pedestrian and cycle routes, they become a very, very rich framework for development. And you can start to translate those, these pieces of relatively low-grade open space into spaces like this, spaces with huge amenity value, that start to reconnect the city to nature. So pop-ups meanwhile, temporary uses. There's a lot of interest in this now. And certainly, hey, it is fun. This is a motorway outside Cologne in Germany. It shows you can do things almost anywhere. And what it does, it starts to rethink the real options you can, you have in using bits of city infrastructure. This is the work of Reba in San Francisco. Just ask you a question here. If you put enough, enough coins in this parking meter, you can park your car there for the day, or you can lay it out as a little piece of park. And this is interesting because it's actually asking questions about how we use our cities. Next. This is in Germany, a very, very drab public space. Overnight, you roll out a carpet, you use it, you use it for events. When you're finished with it, you move off, you roll it up and it's restored back to how it was. And this is the King's Cross scheme in London. This is where the developer has sponsored a temporary theater as part of actually encouraging, inviting people into the space to try and actually understand what this development could be and create a sense of place. Then we've got things like festivals, using the top of a multi-story car park for a bar for the summer. This whole project cost $7,000 to put together for summer. And it again changed the perception of how this piece of city worked. And then on a very, very small scale, inviting communities to actually get involved and use their own cultural traditions to try and actually occupy and get a sense that they have an ownership over spaces with no ownership. So it is fun, but actually it's quite serious because we know the city's layered. We know that, you know, as politicians, as professionals, as consultants, we have an opportunity to shape a city for a tiny bit of its history. Again, the 20th century, we've rather sort of frozen this underneath a whole sea of regulation. And the city with the kind of big, big infrastructures we now need to put in is feeling far less fluid and far more rigid. We know that traditionally, cities are actually quite disposable. And at least a sixth of the world's population live in conditions like this, which are very, very temporary. And I think sort of rethinking the time sequence of the city is actually quite interesting. This is Zigmund Baumann, Polish philosopher, sociologist, who talks about liquid modernity. The period we live in, it's fluid. You can assemble empirical evidence and data, but actually the events can impact on you so fast that you're looking far more tactics and changing ideas very, very rapidly to cope with very, very quick-changing circumstances. And in particular, the technological revolution. 15 years ago, in the last 15 years, we've seen an extraordinary change in the way in which we work. We can work anywhere, we can live anywhere, we can communicate. And therefore, we're beginning to demand a city which is far more flexible and open to different kinds of activity. So if that's a kind of background, what we are seeing now is cities deliberately trying to formulate quite complex strategies to try and harness these energies and cope with the kind of changes we're facing. Berlin has been hugely successful. This economy collapsed on reunification, but it's the cultural sector which now forms a hugely vibrant economic hub. And it's this sector's beginning to experiment in how we reuse the city and actually generate real economic growth at the grassroots. New York City, the work of Janis Sadiq Khan, looking at how we can actually just overnight rethink how we use streets, not just for, for motorcars, but also for, for leisure, for pleasure and for relaxation. Paris, the Champs-Elysees, hugely busy, I guess about 10, 10-lane, 10-lane highway. It's closed every year for the Tour de France, for the cycle race. They close it for festivals. They close it for garden festival. And they grass it over at least once a year as a way of just rethinking how citizens can enjoy this particular street. And then they have sort of more complex approaches. This is North Amsterdam, where an old warf area... So, the city had the courage to take their hands off, see what happened, change the zoning, and allow people to start to use it, more or less rent-free, for different kinds of uses and activities. This has developed a really important economic hub in North Amsterdam. So much so that two years ago, the city sold the last large remaining site to MTV, who saw this as the location they wanted to establish. And then in London, we do things slightly less structured way in London. This is Shoreditch on the fringe of the city of London, an example where you have the space, there's a slightly vacant. You can occupy it with things like workshops, do it very, very cheaply, and again, generate economic activity and then let it grow. Not surprising, the private sector really gets this, actually, probably more so in Britain than the public sector. They understand that actually having vacant space is not a good way to use an economic asset. This is Gavels Wharf on the South Bank. This is 25 years old, not very temporary now, but this has been generating a huge return in terms of retail out of almost nothing. This is purely a painted facade. This cost a few thousand dollars to put together. Twenty-five years later, it's still trading. Pop-up shops, the big retailers, Nike, Nokia, Hermes, understand that short-term lets can generate huge amounts of activity and market value. And on a bigger scale, this is a containerized shopping mall in London. It's got a six-year life from the developers. After that, it'll be moved on. But again, generating a huge amount of activity where otherwise we have hoardings of a vacant space. Another example of a vacant space, the developer who owns this sponsored this. It's a swimming pool in the summer, then two years later it turned into a garden center, and then donated all of the plants afterwards to these city housing blocks. And this is a way of building political capital. This is actually establishing a presence and building the community support for the development he wants to carry out someday. King's Cross, a garden and a skip. This is in southeast London, the, again, the developer of a very, very valuable riverside site is sponsoring this, a railway carriage, it's a creche, it's a café, it's a meeting place, and actually is a contribution to get dialogue between the community and the developer. And into this void, all sorts of new operators are coming in. Urban space management now taking on very, very big buildings, unlike a theatre impresario on Broadway, putting on shows 24 hours a day, sometimes 365 days a year, but really sweating the assets of bits of city which are underused and vacant. And on a smaller scale, lots of groups now will take over vacant buildings with the consent of the owner, and they will leave them. They're badge of pride, as they'll leave these buildings in a better state than when they found them. And in the meantime, use them for productive design studios, artists and architect studios, and for performance space. So, I'm going to sort of wrap up by saying, this poses really quite difficult questions then, is that if we are beginning to accept that thinking about temporary uses is a very powerful way of regenerating city economies, how do we plan it? Well, first of all, I think it takes us down the road towards a far more flexible approach to master planning. Master plans are great if you control the land, control the finance, control the governance. That happens in China. There aren't that many places elsewhere where those three things coincide. And if you don't have the control over land, finance, and governance over sometimes 15- or 20-year development periods, you have to be more flexible. You have to think about loose visions, strategies and tactics. And each stage gets you towards the goal as you move. And you use it in a far more collaborative approach to generate income now as opposed to something in 15 years' time. And this is beginning to sort of get us into this sort of territory of thinking, worse you think of temporary uses, where things which, they're temporary, they're second, second string, we want to do big, tough, permanent stuff. Actually, there's a different model. And that's where temporary uses and activities allow you to experiment, they allow you to prototype, they allow you to generate value now, create employment, create community feedback, create political capital. And some of them, just some of them just fizzled out, some of them are meant to be temporary, others continue. Some become really successful enterprises and spin off on different sides. And others do a really interesting thing. They kind of, they move you into a slightly different direction on your journey. The vision's the same, the destination's the same, but the process is richer in getting there. And if you've sort of start to follow this as a process, it moves us, I think, in a really interesting way, as kind of city planners, city architects, into thinking not just about some spatial frameworks and design, but it gets us thinking as much about how we curate and manage space, and how we stimulate activities, not just in a piece of city we want to construct in a 15-year period, but how we do it at each period of time between now and its completion. And it means that we think about really understanding what's there, experimenting with the grain of the city. Thinking about strategies, this is a piece of work I've just completed for the Olympic Development Corporation, looking at how we open up a vacant piece of land which will be developed in about five years' time. And we're saying here, actually, this is a stage. We have designed a stage which is flexible enough to put events on. It's as simple and as difficult as that. And this is beginning to bring people in and create the locality, and therefore create the market value of a piece of real estate which we want the development industry to get excited about. It allows you to take these kind of sites and do this as a scheme which my design team did about three years ago in Dulston, and then on that, put on events. And this should take to the final slides. So, that's it. You know, it's fun, it's exciting, it's vibrant, it engages, it allows you to experiment. But actually, I think it's a very, very serious way in which we start to think of city planning, not just three-dimensionally in terms of blocks, but four-dimensionally in terms of getting each time sequence to work and to maximize the economic return as we go in a very, very uncertain economic climate. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Appreciate it. Fabulous. Yeah. Joe, do you want us to just take questions? And, Mr. -- oh, yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Atkins, and then Mr. Allen.
I guess, you know, it's great to have this type of vision and presentation. And the first one, I noticed that in most of those streets, trees, you know, like downtown. And I'm looking at downtown that, you know, when I visit to other cities, other countries, you know, Mexico, or China, wherever, there are more trees downtown, the shade is more life-giving. And I guess, Joe, it's hot here, you know, which is walkable with shades and stuff like that. Is there a way, can we plant more trees downtown? Maybe it's a problem with the ground or with the concrete. I know they die off or something. What can we do in a short period of time, working toward a long vision, to make our downtown more tree-bermed, Joe? I mean, I look at that, I was looking at every slide, and every slide was talking about trees in the middle of the meeting or whatever.
Right. On a previous bond program, probably the '98 bond program is my guess, we had projects in there to work on four or five streets in downtown Dallas to add trees and pedestrian lightings. We have a couple of big obstacles. One is all of the utilities. And then the second obstacle is a lot of those stores actually come underneath the pavement. And so, we had to, we don't have soil under there, we have basement, and so we had to kind of create things. So, you're right, we've, when we've done trees, it's really added to it. In the heart of downtown, it is difficult to do. On the periphery of downtown, it is something that we could continue to work on, and, you know...
We said the heart, in the heart of downtown, is there any street, like Main Street or Elm Street, that we can identify? One street could be a walkable street, you know, that you could put trees? Or all our street downtown is prohibited?
Well, and that's what we have been doing on Main Street in particular. Most of our focus has been there. At some point, we're going to have to really pay attention to Commerce and Elm, and there's a lot more that we could do to those streets. You know, right now, our focus is actually in the Deep Elm area, where we're going to be redoing the streets over there. So, we have plenty of opportunities to add street trees.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Gentlemen, it's an honor to have you all here. Can you understand Texan? Just kidding, just kidding. It is indeed an honor. It is indeed an honor to have you all here. The, it said that children represent 20% of the whole population, but 100% of the future. And we see the planning a lot of times and such, but it really hits upon me, particularly as I see the slides and such, a lot of times, and there was about five or six good slides where it showed children and playing and stuff. But the real key to this, and where do the children play? How do you build in a vibrant community with our children out and about playing, creating their imagination, so that we have this really, just this whole total vibrant community with our children involved also? How do you, how do you create that?
Well, I know that, and it relates really to what Peter was saying in some ways, on 24th Street...
Just put the mic next to your mouth there.
On 24th Street in San Francisco, where I showed these little parklets, one builder, one, not one, one store owner has built one there, a parklet just there, and he's put all kinds of things on it for children. He's put things that, he leaves paint out there, and they play, and they paint. And he does all kinds of little things like that. And guess what? It also brings in business. You know, mama leaves a kid out there. It works. Aside from that, there, you just got, gotta just keep at it. You build them. So, you can do it in little parklets, you can also do it in parks, you can also do it in closed streets. It's just a wanting-to-do, and guys and people will help you. Lots of neighborhood groups will help you and join in with you.
Do you see that as a focus? Again, as I see a lot of times, a lot of the slides that, when we're talking, but do you see that as a focus of really trying to tie the whole family approach? Or is it more just an older generational, younger, a younger generation walking through with cafes, things like that? Or do you see this mindset of really trying to just tie in the true family, the true kids, the vibrancy that brings it in? Do you see that line of thinking?
Sure. I see it with, I see it all the time.
Okay.
With, you know, increasingly with young folks, where they, the young folk, folks have a kid, and it's mom and dad coming down the street with the kid, and they're playing with the kid, and they're doing it in a little space like this, one or something like that. It's not so hard to pull off.
Okay. Good.
It's, if you want to assess the health of a waterway, you know, one of the samples that you check the number of species in it. If you want to assess the health of a city, look at how many children you see when you travel around it. If 80% of the world's population would be living in cities by the middle of this century, 80% of the world's children would be growing up in those cities. We know, you know, well-trodden policy paths around the creation of kind of parks, pocket parks, play space, all that kind of stuff. We're beginning to understand the safety a lot better in cities, safety from other people, safety from transport, safety from danger. But increasingly, I think as designers, we have to think beyond the physical design, think about the use. And again, if you can get a bit of space that children can play with, can play in, first of all, it brings the adults in, and secondly, it means it's flexible enough and it should be working pretty well. So, it's a pretty good, good test. And on a recent bit of work I did in London, we designed a new public space, you know, it was, personally, I think it was a really nice piece of design, but it didn't work. And a year later, we realized it wasn't working. We went back and we put soft-play equipment there, Saturday and Sunday, out of a container, just threw it out onto the square. At the end of the day, we packed it up, and suddenly, that space is working, not just for kids, but with adults.
Ah, cool. We were at a, I had the pleasure of being at a meeting with the mayor today, and the mayor pointed out, I think, mayor, what was it, from five-year-olds to 13-year-olds, you said we had 335,000 of these youngsters in the city of Dallas?
Dallas.
In the county, which is, and so, well, I'll say... Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add to the answers, and that is a very simple fact. Still, the majority of households have children. So, if you're not designing the city for children, you're missing the majority of people. They have to go somewhere else. They can't go to your city. Or they have to come in and work and leave as fast as they can because everything for children is somewhere else. So, all aspects of Dallas have to be transformed, not just for the empty nesters and not just for the young singles, but for families. One of the most vivid examples I've recently seen was an average street in Vancouver where one morning they dumped styrofoam. Big, huge things of styrofoam. Within an hour, there were hundreds of children and their parents. Now, they're talking about changing the street to something else. And that's what we have to start thinking about. We've been designing...
Absolutely.
Yeah. Well, no, they did it on purpose. They did it on purpose to try to see what would happen. Could they make this space work? And it was the children that did it. Jaimie Lerner in Curitiba was struggling with a street closure where, for retail purposes, and the retailers were not in his favor. They said, well, it won't work very well. So, one morning, he just put a whole bunch of paper and paints and everything out, and thousands of children came, their parents came with them, retailing was better than it ever been before, and the children did the transformation. So, I love your question because it's at the heart of what this city has to be in the future.
Well, I'll say it again, it's just an honor with all three of y'all. This is just an honor, and what a, what a opportunity for us.
The Jaimie Lerner one in Curitiba is interesting because it's 30 years since he laid down that piece of paper now. It's still operating every Sunday morning. It's still operating every Sunday morning. And if you watch it, what is really interesting is that it's a great thing to bring people together because they're kids, they're parents, and they're of all different economic strata. And there they are. And that's pretty nifty.
What's so cool, and I'll be through, mayor, what's so cool, little pop-ups that you did showing that, the styrofoam ideals. We were in Austin last week, many of us, for something for, it's called the Texas Municipal League. It's about cities coming together. And had a, but they showed also, they, y'all remember walking through and you'd see a bunch of these, whether it's a frog with water coming out of its mouth, or whether it's an exercise piece. And you could buy those things for 1,500 bucks or 1,000 bucks, you know, chump change. But just to put those on the side or do things and catch that imagination, you know, for those kids as they go by, or they want to get on it and exercise, it's a teeter totter that was pretty cool. Rick and I got on it, man. Like, I never got him off of it. But, but my, seriously, my point is, it's from a dollar amount, you can do this economically cheap. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, Mr. Griggs.
Appreciate y'all.
Well, thank you, mayor. It's certainly a pleasure to have both of you here. And, Mr. Jacobs, I'm a big fan of yours. I went downstairs, and I have both your books, the other one, my colleague, Rick Callahan.
Thank you.
So, before you go, if you could autograph my books.
I'd be glad to. You know, I just want a quick comment. You know, they started making those things with hard covers. Then they sold out of the ones with hard covers, and then they never made them hard covers again. They just showed so many with hard covers. The only trouble with that book, the one you're holding, it's about as gracious as going around with a telephone book.
Yes. Yes.
I'll be glad to sign.
And I think the point you made about the street grid, I'm lucky, I represent Oak Cliff, and we have a pre-World War II street grid, absolutely beautiful street grid, one of the best street grids in the city. And looking at downtown, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about Octavia. Some people here may not know that used to be an interstate, and then the earthquake, and about revisioning that. Because our town now in Dallas, one issue, if you got to look around downtown Dallas, is we have a river. So, how do we get the river to connect the two sides rather than divide? So how do we get the, the river to connect, um, the two sides rather than divide it? Then we're essentially surrounded on three sides by interstates, which in, you know, 12 lanes is only half of some of these interstates that we have. Some of them are close to 24 lanes. And so that's a, that's a real issue that we've been wrestling with here in the city of Dallas, especially to energize our downtown and to, and to get that energy into the surrounding areas and that connectivity. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about Octavia since you were really involved in that.
Sure. I had the privilege of to design it. Octavia Boulevard was what was under a double-deck freeway carrying traffic. It had split a community and just done, you know, terrible damage to that community. It's where drugs were sold under there and it's where prostitutes hung out. That, that was Octavia Boulevard. We had done plans that say, you gotta take those things down. Uh, we don't care how, you know, they're no good. Same way we did a plan for the, uh, Embarcadero Freeway. We said, that's gotta come down. Gotta be city policy to take that down. Well, in the case of, well, it happened on the Embarcadero and it happened on, uh, Octavia. On Octavia, yeah, we were fortunate to have a 1989 earthquake, a low, low 380 earthquake. And it caused damage to that thing. So, so then there got to be two votes, almost immediate. Very quickly, the neighborhood hoods, plural, out to the west, put something on the ballot. Got enough signatures to put on the ballot to replace that freeway, the double-deck freeway. That just shocked the people who lived in that neighborhood, shocked them to death. And so they put on a, about, they got enough money to put a ballot measure on the next vote, on the next election. And that one was to, no, take it down and build a multi-way boulevard similar to one in that book that you have. And that passed. That passed. And one of the questions, this is relevant to, I think, your situation with traffic. This is very relevant. So what are we gonna do with all that traffic? What are we gonna do with all that traffic that's going through there? Well, Octavia Boulevard at grade can handle about half the traffic that that freeway was carrying and dumping on streets, half the traffic. Well, so we built, they built, we designed, we had two more elections on it and built Octavia Boulevard. And it works, takes half the traffic. What happened to the other half of traffic? You know, people have done studies of what happened to the other traffic? My God, it's gotta be somewhere. Well, it isn't. Or it filters other ways. It doesn't sound good, I know. And I'm sure that there are a lot of traffic engineers, probably some in the office, in that, just meeting right now. You gotta do what's right. And then things handle themselves. If you can do it all with numbers, you're really screwed.
I think I'll have our city secretary write that down for us. Mr. Greggs, go ahead.
Just, uh, one more, a couple of questions. And I should promote, um, your book also, Mr. Bishop. I think you have a, I don't have a copy, but the Temporary City while we're doing, um, book promotion, I think you have a, um, a book out as.
Thank you. There's still one or two copies left.
One or two copies left, so, uh, that came out. But certainly, um, I, I was wondering if you could speak about two things. One, you talked about planning and, and almost what we call sometimes here organic planning, that process. And so being a judge for this contest, you, you may or may not know, there's been some, some plans that deal with the Trinity River before. Uh, one was called the, um, I think it was called the Balanced Vision Plan. There are extra copies of that in a basement here. And then we also had a plan called Dallas 360. Um, and, and those are just the two most recent ones. There are many plans before that that never seemed to get executed. And I know Dallas isn't alone with this story. And so being part of this plan as a judge, um, with this, looking at the temporary city and the idea that things should be fluid, um, one, what do you think about just cities accumulating so many plans that never seem to, to go anywhere? And then, two, how this one that you're judging will be different?
Well, actually Dallas isn't, as you said, is not unique. I did a piece of work for the mayor of London, uh, associated with the Olympics, looking at how we could pull the regeneration activity for the Olympics right the way down into the old London docks. And the first thing I did was to ask, you know, I wanted a review of all the plans that have been produced. And we counted 73 in 38 years. And we concluded there were 73 too many. Uh, and the first move was to say, let's just, let's just kill them off. And let's do what plans rarely do. Let's ask the, the really simple question about what do we think this place should be in 20 years' time? Uh, and so we don't get into fantasies. Then let's test it about whether or not we think, uh, it's a, you know, it's a real prospect. Test it by asking local people, test it by asking business, run economic models across it. And then come up with a vision. Then the second thing, uh, I did was the, the London mayor is a conservative, uh, to the right of center. The local mayor was, uh, labor to the left of center. Just a question of having lunch with a pair of them and agreeing that actually there was a very, very simple vision we could talk about. And the pair of them then, a few days later, signed it off. So the political alliance and the vision was the key to the regeneration of this part of London that's happening now really quite, quite rapidly. Uh, as I, as I said, the, you know, it, it, it sounds glib, but if you don't control the land, all the land, uh, if you don't control the finance over long periods of time, uh, including one or two business cycles, and if you haven't got continuity of legislative control through political cycles and elections, actually you can't plan end state. Well, you can, but they end up in your basement. Which is why I think that the kind of, the critical thing, and, and I, obviously, I, I shouldn't be drawn into a comment as a judge on the competition, but the, the critical thing, I think, is to ask, there's, there's real questions about all the submissions and the other submissions coming in from your wider community, is what can you achieve? It's not just where you might want to be in 20 years. What can you do next week, next month, next year? And again, think about plans not as a simple, hard fix, hard wide end state, but a sequence of events and moves that get you there. And I think that's, that's the critical thing. And that's where there's kind of the more fluid, uh, tactical approach to master planning, which is not, you know, uh, it's not a question of refusing to plan, it's still planning, but it's thinking about how you construct futures and how you move towards them. And then finally, the beauty of this is you can construct narratives, you can talk to people. You can actually explain to local peoples and people in the neighborhood or to business leaders or financiers. You can explain a story, and people like stories, actually. People understand stories, sometimes far better than master plans.
I have one other question. We kind of started something in Oak Cliff, it was called the Better Block Project. We did it back in, I think it was around 2008, 2009, where there was a street and, and not much was going on there. So we put in some pop-up, um, restaurants, pop-up cafes, brought in some trees. And we were really inspired at that time by the Parking Day, which had come out of Australia and, um, Jan Gale's work in, in Copenhagen with demonstration zones. But now seeing those projects, what we run into is there's so many antiquated city ordinances on, on, um, for example, you can't put merchandise out in front of stores. And we have one here in Dallas where every awning for a business, we charge a thousand dollars. And you know how hot it is here in Texas? We should be encouraging awnings. And then we have prohibitions against cafe seating. I, I know this story is, other cities have gone through it. So in other cities, what have you found that begins to break these regulations down and let cities start to, to take a risk that some of these old rules have been in, in the books now for 60, 70 years, may not be the best? What, what do you think is the tipping point that you've seen in other cities where they begin to, um, look at their code, their building codes and, and these antiquated rules?
I think the tipping point actually is around leadership, normally political leadership. Uh, and it's about finding, you know, somebody or group or, you know, a mayor or a political kind of group on the council who actually say, we are gonna change it. That, that's the key thing. Or an individual who champions it. Uh, really, you know, you mentioned the work of Jan Gale, uh, who was fundamentally challenging some of the assumptions in Copenhagen. And over 25 years has produced a complete sea change in the way in which that city works. We've already mentioned Jamie Lerner, you know, another individual who came in and challenged. Uh, and I showed you the picture of North Amsterdam, where they had the courage to actually throw away their zoning policy, uh, and take their hands off this area completely, uh, and basically turn it over to people who wanted to occupy it and regulate in a very, very loose way. And I think that the points you're raising are the cities' problems and issues the cities across the developed world are now facing in this kind of post, uh, postmodern period in the 21st century. It, we now have, uh, a set of regulations, which is a bit like the attic of my house, actually. Probably about time we had a clear out. It's not about complete deregulation. You need regulations to have good cities and healthy cities and sociable cities. But actually, you do need, uh, at each level, especially the administration, to actually fundamentally ask why, and does this get in the way? Does it help? And, uh, I think one of the kind of the interesting things about temporary urbanism is that it's about the city understanding how it can pull back, actually. How it could be more liberal, how it could be more permissive, but understanding that it still has a primary responsibility to control and to regulate, but in a light-touch way and not using the baggage of history to do it, all the points that you've raised. Sorry, what was I saying? It's actually, and prototype it, experiment. You know, take one street and just see what happens.
Along those lines, there, there are a couple of levels. Obviously, I mean, you're the council, so someone's gotta look at them and slowly say, okay, what of these make sense? And, and just, and maybe they make sense one place, but don't another, don't another. And, and you, the guys, have to do it. There's another level, too. And that's the level that you may not see. That's the level of standards and norms set by various professions. And believe me, those are tough. Those are tough. And I spend an awful lot of time, I have spent, fighting those. I could show you, well, on that, on Octavia Boulevard, it is a crazy one, absolutely crazy one, where when we were designing it, they said, I was told by parking and traffic, you cannot have a tree within five feet of a parking meter. I was, you're kidding. The way around that was simply, hey, we're putting the trees in first. You have a problem. I don't have a problem. We're gonna do the trees. The other, the other one was in Oakland where they wanted the, you know, the professionals, not my professional, but wanted the lanes wider. And we didn't. We wanted them narrower because we wanted to use that space for something else. And so we said to them, we want those narrow, we want slow traffic. That'll make traffic slower. And they said, but they're not safer. So we got together all the data that shows that narrower lanes mean slower traffic, mean fewer deaths when there's a, an accident. And that's the way it works. And so they're in the tight, tight meeting. They won't change because, why won't they change? Because if we change, or if we build it your way and there's an accident and we get sued, you know, for breaking our, we'll be liable. How do you respond to that? You respond to that by saying, fine, do it your way. But now that we gave you the data, that it's safer and you don't use it and there's an accident, you're gonna be sued by somebody who's sitting in the room right now. That's how you're gonna change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greggs. Uh, Ms. Grayson.
Thank you, mayor. One of the things I noticed when I moved here in 79 was that, especially in downtown, we built these large developments and we turned them inward so that people who walked by them didn't know what was in there and weren't drawn into them. And then years later came along Victory, which was the development right outside downtown. And this was, you know, many years later after 79. And what did we do? We built a development that turned inward and it hasn't been successful. And I remember at the time, I was commenting about the urban design features of it. And I was told that my interest in good urban design was really quite amusing. And, and that showed the mindset at the time. And it, the mindset at the time was let the developer do whatever he wants. And one of the things that struck me about both of your presentations was that you were talking about small-scale, inexpensive things that you could do to really liven up a city. And they didn't cost a fortune, they weren't grandiose, and yet they added so much to the quality of life. I'm so pleased that we're here today listening to this. It shows to me that we're making real progress in a city with our thinking that says that, you know, you can do things like this and you don't have to be grandiose all the time. So, and I wanted to ask Mr. Jacobs, in Portland, where you had the small block sizes, do you think that was because they had the growth boundary? And, and so therefore they were pushing the dens, they were pushing density in? That had nothing to do with it?
Had nothing to do with it. Those, those block sizes, that, uh, that particular grid was set way before growth boundaries. I mean, like a century, you know, that was way before.
Oh, okay. So, so the fact that they do have a growth boundary, has that worked for them?
That, it has worked in this, I believe it has worked in the sense that, one, they are able to promote inner city and especially central city, uh, high-density development, even to the point in some cases of saying to developers, no, we want it a little higher in the density. And, and in, and that in, as being part and parcel of, uh, good street car service, really good expanded street car service and housing next to offices, so walkability, that also combines with some projects outside of the city, outside of the city boundaries, and I've just forgotten a couple of their names, that are moving along and fairly positively right now. The, I think the better, you know, Portland is doing wonderfully, you know why it's doing wonderfully? It's copying Vancouver.
That's quite a statement. We've got a copy of Vancouver. You know, I think right here in Dallas, we have an opportunity to have some more green spaces just because we have little pieces of land that our real estate department owns and they're scattered all over the city. And what we do is we sell those off because we want to make some money off of those pieces of land. But what we could really do with them is give them back to the neighborhoods and let them do something wonderful there. We could actually have green necklace, little areas connected to each other all throughout neighborhoods in this city, simply by letting those pieces of property go to the neighborhoods, maybe have them work with the money and the momentum program and expand the momentum program so it's a matching amount of money that neighborhoods get. And you could create these wonderful little areas all over the city. But when we suggest that, what we hear is, is that, well, but, you know, we want to make some money off those little pieces of land. And for the little bit of amount that we get off of that, I think we could do something by not selling them off that would be wonderful, that would really add to our quality of life. I wish we would start thinking in that direction instead of always thinking about, well, we can make a little bit of money off of them. So I'm thrilled that you gentlemen are here today. I, I think it was a wonderful, both presentations were wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grayson. Mr. Kingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jacobs, um, you may or may not be familiar with it. We've got a little piece of interstate highway on the other side of downtown. highway on the other side of downtown from the area you've been looking at that connects US 75 to I-45, and it's all I-345. And these crazy nutty planners think that we could tear it down. TechDOT is looking at repairing the thing, it's 40 years old or something, needs to be substantially repaired, and they're looking at 10 options, none of which involve tearing it down. How would we go about talking to people at TechDOT in a way that would make them at least consider the possibility?
Of tearing it down? Sometimes some alternative designs help. Just do an alternative design. It, in all likelihood, won't answer your numbers problem, but I had some word on that subject before.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Beasley, wanted to comment on that?
I wanted just to follow up on that, because you now have a design studio right downstairs. That's what they do every day. And the best way, on many of these issues, to really start talking about alternatives is to draw them, is to show people what they look like, get people involved with them, and then you have energy to make some different things happen. On every transportation issue that I've come across in my time with you here in Dallas, I've always felt the best way is let's just draw the alternative and start showing it to people, and ask people, is this what you prefer, or is this what you prefer? And Mr. Jacobs is living proof to me that it's more this one is what the majority of people prefer. But they don't know what it looks like, they don't know how it, so you talk about it to them, and all they worry about is traffic. But if they see the alternative, they realize what potential is there. The studio is there to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Just a couple of questions while we've got you here. Thank you, I agree with the rest of the council, this has been fabulous. You know, Mr. Jacobs, you showed some fountains. Dallas doesn't have many fountains. Do you see new cities doing fountains, or is that an old-city thing that those fountains have just hung around?
If I'm not mistaken, I saw some relatively new fountains here.
Okay. Like, what cities would have done those?
Yeah. You know, we did some fountains and have some fountains in San Francisco. Relatively new, they're lousy. They're really lousy. And lousy, terrible, is that lousy? One of the reasons that they're lousy is no one knows, there's no history of maintaining them. You know? Fountains, if you're going to do, fountains can be wonderful, and especially where you might at times need humidity.
Right.
Fountains can be just wonderful, but do them, understand that they have to be maintained. I'm sure, if any of you have been to Rome, it is just full of fountains. And it's fascinating to watch them once a week. It's Rome, you know, they got money problems. It's fascinating to watch the truck come up once a week, let all the water out, clean that thing, you know, it's Bernini that they're cleaning. Clean, clean that thing, put the water back in, it's operating by noon, you know, and they know how to maintain fountains. I think fountains are fantastic, but you've got, but some cities know how to do it, and some cities don't. We don't. I hope you do.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, did you want to say something? Okay, I'll come in after you do. Go ahead.
Thank you. What do you do, and I think you was right on time about your statement, about letting, putting everything out and just kind of letting the community decide, what do you like? You like this, or you like this? I think that approach works, at least in communities where I live, letting the community kind of decide what they want to see. Do you have any ideals for cities that have homeless people, and giving them some green space to do and work, show their creativity, their artwork? Have you seen that in any of the cities? I'm asking Mr. Jacob. And if you haven't, that's okay.
Naturally, a tough, a really tough question was going to come, and you have done it, thank you. We don't do it well. I know, we in San Francisco have been building a fair amount of housing for homeless, not enough, so we have a lot of street people. We have a lot of social services. And in part, I'm sure, because we do, people come there for that. And then people say, well, you can't keep doing that. So we have real problems. We are behind all the time, but we're working at it. And I don't know that you can do anything else. I wish I could be more positive on that.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Ms. Davis? Thank you. Another question I had was, I heard you, I think it was you, Mr. Jacobs, that, maybe it was the temporary thing about shutting streets down. I've seen this around the world, people have a tendency, have a, for some reason, more flexibility to shut streets down for a day. We don't do that real well. Is there any learning you want to give us about, is that a good thing? I sound like it was, you know, people walking. Anybody getting experience in that?
I showed the slide of the Autobahn in Germany.
Yeah, okay.
Close farmer's market, which is.
There we go.
Yeah, which was actually, it's just better to demonstrate, if you can do it in Germany, and break rules in Germany, you can break rules in almost anywhere else in the world, I think. So it's a kind of, it's a lesson. There's been, a lot of cities now do things like car-free days, closing, and I also showed the pictures of New York City, which closed Broadway, passed the Broadway overnight, of course. And I pick up the point that Alan made, that actually, and I've experienced this in London, if you close streets, we're not quite sure what happens to the traffic. But it doesn't create the chaos that the traffic engineers calculate. That's a kind of interesting lesson, and really worth taking a few sensible risks on that one. If you do decide to go down the line of closing a road, you know, close it for a day on the weekend, close it on a Saturday. Experiment, prototype, but that's where temporary interventions are really interesting, because you can experiment. And if it doesn't work, you know, you might get a couple of bad headlines in the local paper, and then it's forgotten about, and you haven't put a huge amount of money in. Normally, actually, it does work. And normally, when you start to close streets, if you close the right streets and put the right activity in, which is key, what normally happens is, you know, the citizens of a city go, actually, this is rather good. And actually, you get a kind of response, and you start to build on it. And then you actually start to change the way in which the cities use, people's perceptions happen, and actually the businesses normally benefit hugely on that.
Yeah, Larry.
One of the most vivid recent examples is in Paris, where they don't close a street for a day, they close a street for the summer season, and they turn it into a beach, because it's right along the river. So they bring in, they just load sand into the, they add palm trees, and all of a sudden it becomes a beach, it becomes a park. They manage the traffic, but they.
For the whole summer or just August?
No, they do it for most of the summer, is my understanding. Yeah, they do it for most of the summer. They also do street closures throughout inner-city Paris quite regularly. And they do it partly to test what's going to happen to the traffic, but they also do it partly to respond to community needs for different kind of events and activities. And they don't do it as a random thing, it's very programmed, very organized, as the French are.
Well, I saw it in Sao Paulo on the major highway next to the ocean, they close it on every Sunday, or every other Sunday, something like that, and it's bike and walk day on that. And I just said, how does it, but how does the folks get around? But people just love it, and it becomes a, you turn a highway into an asset versus just something that takes up more space, so.
Along the same lines, I'm sure, San Francisco has a big program of closed streets, and it's advertised, they're well-advertised, three or four or five on a Sunday. And I'm just sure that you could contact somebody there, and somebody could tell you exactly how they do it. There's no big mystery to that program. So somebody could make the contact.
Thank you. Look, I just wanted to say, and I'll open it up if you have any comments about what I'm about to say here. Dallas has got a lot of work to do. We got, I mean, we're a great city, all right? We're very young, but boy, we've got so much to do in this planning to make it more vibrant and not cut each other off. I believe most of the immediate work needs to be done, and two people aren't here, Mr. Medron and Mr. Kingston's district, which are downtown. We got a lot of work downtown. I think we're getting folks living here again, we've talked about that. I think the only reason businesses are going to come back in a major way, I mean, employers, because we can't compete from a rental standpoint, was the suburbs, is to do something very special, and that's why we've got to do this. So I think as a council, we need to be more cognizant of, and more planful about being more creative downtown. And my hat's off to everybody that's worked on this, so it's not a criticism of anybody, but we just got to push it faster and harder. I do believe that there's a paradox that you guys spoke about here, and even Ms. Davis even touched on it a little bit, is who's right about all this stuff, okay? I mean, it's sort of like we are, as a city, are all kind of planning the clothes that are in a clothes closet, all right? And some people have good taste, and some people don't have good taste. And some people are part of the community, and some people aren't part of the community, and some people don't want buildings that block off and have no transparency, okay? So you make rigid rules about those things, and then we need to be more flexible and more experimental. And there's a real dynamic discussion from our body politic that has got to be there. So I think the ideas from a planning standpoint are cool and interesting, but we have got to catch up in how we do city government and city management. Otherwise, we'll have chaos. And out of chaos comes good things from time to time, but then there's a lot of dead bodies along the way as well, if we don't do this in a thoughtful manner. And so I think, you know, the onus is on us not only to be creative, but to think about, what does this mean for businesses doing business with the city of Dallas, developers, planners, CPC, the city council, who is in charge of who? Do we let communities vote on this stuff? And it's not clear to me on how to accomplish that. And I think it's a very, very important and an issue with a lot of gravitas that we've got to deal with. Larry, you probably thought about this more than anybody. You want to close and summarize on that?
I'm very sympathetic with what you're talking about, because on the one hand, I come from a tradition of regulate it more, and then you'll get something to happen. And I still do believe that regulation is how a city expresses itself. What Dallas, I think, has to get in the group of are the cities who are beginning to understand that regulation is not about black and white. Regulation is transactional. Regulation has to be a convening of good judgment by the people of a city about what the city should be like. And I can show you at least 10 cities who have transformed their regulations away from the black and white things that are always out of date and always piss you off, to being a kind of system which engages people to make judgments about where they want to live and how they want to live. And you have started it here with your new urban design panel. That is a huge step forward for Dallas, and it puts you in the forefront of many cities as compared to many cities. But now, you have to move that one step forward into much more discretionary regulation, and sometimes where you edit regulation out. I actually proposed in my city, which is probably one of the more progressive on managing regulation, a regulation audit. Every day we make more regulations, let's have a system to get rid of the old ones that are no longer useful. And transforming every single regulation from being, you must do this and you can't do this, to being, generally you can do this, and occasionally you can do this. Why? Because you have smart officials who make smart judgments day to day and get it right.
Great, well, thank you so much. And Jill, excellent work, I appreciate it, and I'm with Mr. Allen that we're honored that you guys chose to be with us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for watching this video. For more information, please visit connectedcitydesign.com.